Welcome to the Tuesday, March 10th, 2020, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is being recorded, aired live on LCTV, and livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement that anyone recording the meeting disclose that they are doing so. I just wanted to let everyone know that Armin Ray, the Chair, is out of town but will be joining us via conference call. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ryan, which of the correspondents?
We have a memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of Occupational Education at CTEC, dated March 2, 2020, regarding the Walter E. Quigley Junior Student of the Month Awards for February 2020. Long Meadow student honored this month was Austin Munson, Graphic and Visual Design 3.
Thank you. There's a motion for the minutes?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the February 25th, 2020 school committee meeting as presented.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing that Armin is joining us via conference call, we'll be doing a roll call for all of the votes. Jamie?
Yes, aye.
Gianna?
Aye.
Aye. Armin?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Susie?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any visitor comments?
No visitors.
Okay. School Committee announcements and recognitions? Kevin?
Just a quick shout out to our winter athletes who are still participating in postseason. So Chris Johns is going to Nationals for the high jump, and the hockey team is playing at the Garden, TD Garden in Boston on Sunday. Armin, is that right, Sunday?
That's correct.
So, yeah, if you still want to get out there and support our athletes, there's a couple still going from the winter.
Excellent. Anyone else? If everyone is okay with it, we're going to move the agenda item about the coronavirus readiness, the new business, Agenda Item 11, up to this point in the meeting. Is there a consensus for that? Okay. Do we have to say it out loud for him?
No, consensus, you don't have to do it.
Okay. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Dr. O'Shea for this.
So I appreciate the committee's interest in including this on the agenda. It was clearly a priority of every committee member, and I appreciate your willingness to move it up on the agenda as well because I think it deserves that type of attention. So it's, as has been said often, a very fluid, rapidly moving, rapidly evolving situation. And the report that I will provide for you tonight is probably different than the report that I would have provided had we met last night. But I'll hit on a few things just to hopefully highlight our response and our preparedness in this situation. So I believe the committee is aware that we have established a townwide COVID-19 task force that's under the direction of the emergency manager, John Dearborn. And he's working closely with Lynn Simmons, the new town manager, in that regard as well. And the purpose of the task force essentially is to monitor developments and make sure that we are prepared and responding appropriately based on the best guidance that's out there from federal and state sources. So it's a multidisciplinary team. It cuts across all departments. Mr. Mazza is also involved on the task force, and it's a good opportunity to share the best information. And I would reiterate Chief Dearborn's message, one town, one message. I think that's an important concept for us, just to make sure that we're all sharing the best information and that we're all have a common understanding and a common response. So the task force is working very well. Only a short time ago, I issued an email to the whole community announcing that we unfortunately will, our position where we will have to cancel any large public gatherings hosted here in Long Meadow Public Schools. And that comes on the heels of the Governor's Declaration of a State of Emergency just this afternoon. So what that means for us is unfortunately, we have a district-wide music concert tomorrow evening, Wednesday evening, that we will need to cancel and reconsider for a future date. And that's really unfortunate. A lot of time has been put into that. It's one of the highlights of the year, and I'm saddened to make that announcement. But I think, again, it's based on the best information, the best advice and guidance that we're getting from many, many sources. It will also include the Minding Your Mind public events scheduled for Wednesday morning and Thursday night. And in advance of the Governor's Declaration of a State of Emergency, we had also announced the cancellation of field trips that took students out of state later on your agenda. Because it's a school committee matter, you'll consider international field trips. So we're paying close attention to student travel. I will note that beginning tomorrow, we will be pulling together a group of internal stakeholders to consider continuity of learning and continuity of operations. And I appreciate that our LEA President Kathy Rosado just joined us as an attendee at the meeting. And Kathy and a few members of the LEA will be important members of that team just to do some contingency planning. And, you know, it's sort of important that we don't get too carried away publicly with speculation, but we want to be prepared for some of the what-ifs. So that group will convene tomorrow. It will include teachers, administrators, central office administrators, just starting to understand what the developments are out there and how they could affect us as a school community. We've tried to stay tuned in to statewide conference calls. There was a helpful one last week with Mass DPH and the Mass Department of Education. One of the things that we learned today is that the state will give us some wiggle room on the 180-day requirement. It's a little complicated, the formula, but essentially, bottom line means that we wouldn't have to go beyond the 185 days that we build into the student calendar. And we would not, under any circumstances, need to extend school beyond June 30th. So that's really recent news. Still waiting to see that explained in more detail by the state. But we expect that there'll be some wiggle room on that 180-day requirement, which is good news. There's a host of considerations, too, that the Commissioner's Office is starting to address. One of the things that they publicly addressed was attendance. We are, one of the big accountability measures that we're held to is chronic absenteeism, and we expect that the state will exercise some wiggle room on how they calculate chronic absenteeism. So more details on that as it becomes clearer to us. And then just the things that have been with us really during any cold and flu season, the advanced cleaning protocols and the hygiene reminders, which every public health official that anyone has ever heard would say that that's the most important thing that all of us can do, that we put those reminders out, and how we can prevent colds and flus, and that we adhere to them. So those are some of the things that we're involved with. We are trying to keep our ear to the ground. We're trying to be nimble, trying to respond quickly to sort of an ever-changing situation. There is a sort of an emergency meeting of the COVID-19 task force tomorrow morning at the Fire Department, so we'll learn a little bit more at that time. But I appreciate the town's approach to this. It's been very multidisciplinary, a lot of sharing of information, great partnership across all agencies. So that's enormously helpful. We're not doing this planning, and we're not doing our response in any type of vacuum at all. We're doing it with the best information that is being sorted and sifted and understood by that task force. So that's where we are. Happy to try to answer any questions you might have, or maybe dive a little deeper on some of our preparedness. I would caution us collectively about getting into too much speculation around the what-ifs and the maybes, and what if this happens, or what if that doesn't happen? Because, again, the situation at, you know, 3:30 today was very different than the situation at 8 o'clock this morning, following the Governor's announcement in the late afternoon. So I hope that's helpful. And the community just received another email just this afternoon from me on some of these matters. That's where we are.
Thank you. Kevin?
Marty, thank you. This is really complicated and difficult stuff, so thank you for all your work on this and everybody else. And I guess one thing, I know you don't want to get into speculation, but I'm just curious if we have to shut a school down, do we even have the capability to try and do remote learning for an entire school? Is that even a possibility, or is that just there's no way we could do that because we don't have the whatever to do it?
As I'm sure you know, and I'm sure you've experienced in your own role, that there's a lot of questions that underlie that question, right? And everything from network capacity to collective bargaining agreements to the state's position, you know, how much wiggle room they will give us on that, how much they will allow for and count, sort of remote learning or online learning. But, you know, how you deliver that in a public K-12 setting is something that we will begin to talk about tomorrow. But I think it's just critical that we do it in partnership with the LEA, in partnership with the school committee, and kind of recognizing that there's a lot of logistical challenges there. So we're not quite sure. This is uncharted territory for so many of us, and that's where sort of the collective wisdom of the group that's involved in the planning will help. So I wish I could give you more specific information or answer to that, but that's...
I mean, your answer is fine. And I'll just tell you what's happening at Smith's, since we just found out today that our students on Friday are leaving and they're not coming back. It's a two-week window where the faculty and the IT folks are trying to figure out, how are we going to do this remotely? Recognizing that you can't just, you know, snap your fingers and everybody's going to know what they have to do. So that was something that the college said, there's no way we can do this without having that time to ramp up. And again, it's clearly a different situation at college versus, you know, our district. But it is interesting, it's important to recognize that if we are going to have to shift, it's going to take time to get everybody to figure out how to do it, and for, I guess, for us to figure out if we have the capacity to do it.
Right. Certainly. Certainly.
Susie?
I just had a question about the continuity of learning piece. But are you also, I know on the town level, you're working with the Department of Public Health and all of that. Are the school nurses involved in that conversation? And do we have a consulting doctor?
So thank you for that question. So I should have noted that Liz Gartman, who's the nurse over at Williams, is a member of the task force as well. We do have a consulting physician that we work with that, you know, right now, we're still relying more sort of on the public health side. Beverly Herschorn's been a tremendous asset. I think her phone has probably been ringing constantly for the last couple of weeks, but she's really stepped up to the plate as well. But we did have the opportunity, Jean Fontaine and I met with our school nursing staff a few days ago, and they seem well-equipped. And they understand the local picture, but they also understand the big picture. So that gave me a lot of confidence. They had some great sort of reminders for us in terms of cleaning protocols, you know, that we really ought to rethink how we approach daily cleaning, you know, so that there might be some things that we have to set aside to make sure that we're really being super attentive to high-touch surfaces and railings and handles and that kind of thing. So they were helpful.
Armin, did you want to add anything?
Chairman Ray, you with us? No. You lost him.
Is he muted?
No, it appears he's offline. Want to try him again?
Sure.
We can continue.
Okay, Jan?
Yes, I have a question on the, since the Governor put in a state of emergency, do we have to go and revisit all the building use requests as well? It sounds like we have to cancel a, obviously, something that is important to all the students here, but we have, I think those building use requests were pretty big groups. Do we have to go back and communicate with them, or how does that work?
Yeah, I think we were, one of the things I noted was to go back and get a list of what we have coming up for requests or approved permits for the next couple of months, just to see the impact. I mean, our busy season is definitely the spring for the dance recitals, which usually start sometime, you know, mid to late April, and run through mostly June, mostly June. So...
Did I hear it right, that we're not allowed to have, is that what?
I wouldn't, I didn't, I think, I want to go back and read a transcript of the Governor's message. As I recall it, it was a recommendation from public health officials and from the Governor's Office. I didn't hear that large public gatherings were disallowed.
Okay. Just a recommended, don't get everybody together if you didn't have to.
I think the conversation that we had today at the fire station following the Governor's announcement was to sort of begin to draw distinction between essential services and nonessential services. And, you know, I think that's how we will need to think about some of these things. Chairman Ray, you with us?
I am here, yes.
Okay, great. All right, no worries.
Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would add, I was able to switch over to Long Meadow TV while I was getting connected back on. It was a great conversation by all. I guess I wanted to just add that, you know, we're appreciative of the information that is coming in from the public. But I would caution that, I think Chief Dearborn and the team that's been put together is attuned to the latest advice, along with our connection to the Massachusetts Department of Education, helping to inform a lot of the public policy right now around the things that are happening. And I would just, you know, caution that, why would I say caution? I would just want the public to know that the interests of the town are at hand right now, and trying to keep everybody as safe as possible through the work of that committee, I think. The more we adhere to the advice of the professionals, the better.
Great, thank you. Gianna?
So I was just wondering, the concerts, so all of the musicians are ready, is there a way that, like, LCTV could broadcast the concert? You know, if the question is the people in the audience, the musicians are all ready to go...
We haven't had a lot of time to contemplate that. We did talk about that briefly this afternoon, about the prospect of just videotaping the musicians and then airing it so that parents, grandparents, friends, and neighbors could see it. I think the challenge of pulling that together logistically between now and tomorrow night seemed to be challenged, but also just the number of people that would still be converging on the school to drop off and pick up their kids, I think that seemed to be prohibitive. So I touched base very briefly with Kayla Whelan, who's the Chair of the Music Department at the high school, and assists with the coordination of this with her colleagues. And, you know, she understood that that would be a real logistical challenge to pull that off between now and tomorrow. I think if it were a smaller group and it weren't a K-12 group of musicians, I think we probably could pull that off. So we wouldn't rule that out, though, as a way to let the talents of the kids be seen and advertised. I mean, so if we can, if we can do that in chunks or smaller groups, or reschedule the event entirely. So I think Kayla's preference, again, very brief conversation, was to reschedule the event at some point. But the spring gets busy. You know, this is hitting us at a difficult time, because this is the time when there's a lot of evening activities, it's pre-M-CAS, it's between seasons, it's not the spring when everybody's life ramps up. So this is hitting us at a challenging time, unfortunately.
Any other questions?
Hey, Bronwyn?
Yes?
Just one more comment. I think Marty just brought it up. You know, I think people need to be aware that just beyond this, though, that the regular flu is still out there, pretty prevalent right now. I know that's caused us some confusion in the medical community, so making sure that we're adhering to all of the, you know, the bulletins that are coming up, hand washing and sanitizer, and, you know, staying home when you're sick are really important at this stage for not just COVID, but for the regular flu, which is still testing positive, I know, in the state of the speech.
Yeah, great point. True. Thank you. And thank you to Dr. O'Shea for gathering all that information. It did come pretty quickly after the press conference today from Governor Baker. And I know that Dr. O'Shea will keep us apprised of information and communicate everything to us as soon as he finds out anything new, which we appreciate.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any business with guests on administrative reports. Dr. O'Shea, you're up again.
Sure, yeah. Let's see. So there's a listing of upcoming events, some of which sadly we will now have to scratch, at least temporarily. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up, we're in the midst of handbook reviews, and it's an otherwise busy time for us. Parent-curriculum advisory group is meeting next week as well. So we have a PD day on March 13th, which a quick side note on that, we see that as an opportunity to do some of the deep cleaning that we've talked about. So we will assemble the custodial team early on Friday morning and lay out the expectations and their work for the day. We're going to set aside probably some of the PD that we had planned for them, because we think that this is important, obviously. Thank you to Assistant Superintendent Sue Bertrand for arranging, and Jean Fontaine for arranging a very sort of robust menu of activities for our teachers and staff on the 13th. You'll see in the report some of the things that we're going to work on, new arts framework for pre-K to 12 art and music teachers, middle school teachers working on studying standards-based teaching and learning, EASC work at the high school, de-escalation training for paraeducators, and writing calibration time for elementary teachers. So they'll be busy with that. Superintendent's Corner, backed by popular demand. There's another installment that is running on LCTV. We did a bit with the Long Meadow Educational Excellence Foundation, and so you can access that on the LCTV's YouTube channel. We're sort of a new venture for us, or perhaps it's something that we have gotten away from and we want to get back to UMass as a College of Education Career Fair, scheduled on April 1st. We've registered for that. We're open to send a team up there. It's a tight job market, and we really want to do even better job of attracting and retaining a really diverse pool of applicants and talented applicants. So we will keep you posted on that. Hopefully that works out. Community Health Needs Assessment, actually Sue Bertrand, you assisted with that. This is just something that the Long Meadow Board of Health has undertaken. It's a health needs assessment. They're interviewing stakeholders, and they reached out to us as a stakeholder. So...
Yeah. Anything you want to mention? Yeah, Shelley Warren and I were interviewed, and the Rec Department as well. Barry was on, Barry Johnson's on the phone, and they just asked, you know, about our particular concerns relative to student health. And I think we pretty much honed in on students' kind of anxiety and stress, the things that we've been talking about for the last several years, and mental health. And kind of took about 45 minutes to answer those kinds of questions and talk about what we were strong in, and where we thought we could make some inroads. So I think that's going to come out in a summary, but not for quite a while.
And sort of along a similar line in terms of stakeholder engagement and focus groups, we've kicked off officially our work with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity. We're really excited about this, and you'll hear more about it. But before the conclusion of this year, we will work with the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity to issue a learning community survey focused on equity questions. We'll do some focus group interviews, and then we will assemble a large steering committee that will meet several times before the end of the year and into next year to kind of coordinate our response to the data that is gathered through this process. So we are excited to put questions of equity and diversity at the forefront, on the table, and in a real purposeful way. So we'll keep you posted on that. And then Diane, thanks for the note. We're looking, the school committee, we'd love to have the school committee represented at the Pioneer Valley Educational Excellence Teaching Award banquet on May 13th. So if any school committee member would be interested in attending, if you could tell Diane, I suppose, and if we have more than one interested, we can figure out a process to pick one person. There's only one ticket available. It's a crowded, crowded banquet hall, but that's May 13th.
Do you have time on that?
Probably...
It's pretty early, 5:30.
5:30.
Yeah.
Pictures are at 5:00, I think.
It's a nice event.
The banquet starts at 5:30.
So let us know. That's all I got.
Great. Thank you. There isn't a school committee chair report. Armin, can you provide us with a student rep report?
Sure. So I received a few suggestions from students for changes on how they can enter sporting events. And the common theme seemed to be that students should be able to obtain a pass if they play a sport that season that would allow them to get into that sporting event for free. I know that the athletic department relies on ticket sales as a significant part of their budget, but I think maybe it's worth considering as has the potential to maybe increase attendance at games and school spirit. So when we meet next week, we'll discuss that as a suggestion, and talk to Mr. Capitasto, our athletic director, to see if it's feasible. And I was also wondering if we've heard back from the traffic committee at all about our parking lot proposal?
We have not.
We have not.
Yeah, I think there is a, I did see a meeting invite come across through my email. But they may have been wait, I would encourage you to reach out to them directly, too, Armin. I think they probably would appreciate. We did send them the PowerPoint that you guys put together, so they have that in their hands. But feel free to connect with them directly. If you need a connection on that, we can get that to you.
Okay, thank you. Yep, that's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. Ryan, did you have an LPVEC update?
We have a meeting, and we voted to spend money like usual. My meeting was 10 minutes, how was yours?
Oh.
We don't get to, they're doing a search for a new director, and my committee is not allowed to have anybody on it. So maybe Bronwyn could speak to that, because her committee can have people on it.
Yes, yes, we can. So we actually are in the process of searching for a new executive director. The application process is closed, and I believe the interviews will be occurring at the beginning of April. And there were several people that were, that applied, I was told, which is great. I think Dr. O'Shea is going to be on the selection committee, and we're still deciding who's going to represent the board itself. So it'll be some people from the board, and then some of the superintendents on the committee. Before our next meeting in March, we're planning on meeting with the faculty and staff members of the LPVEC, just to check in with them and see kind of what they're looking for, and get some feedback from them before we start the interviewing process. So that covers the LPVEC. Kevin, is there an energy and sustainability update?
Yeah, I just wanted to update you. Last we talked, we talked about possible funds from the schools going to help with renovations at some of the schools. And I just wanted you to know that we've pushed any of that back till stuff that would happen in the summer. And after talking to Tom, it seems like that would better align with our budget process, where Tom might know if we have some funds that we could put towards that in sort of the, what, May-June timeframe. So our thought is that that would come to the committee. So our thought is that that would come to the committee in that timeframe in order to help with the energy sustainability investments at the schools. And so I think that when we look back at the numbers, it would be something initially that would be under $20,000 and it could expand depending on if we expanded beyond three schools. That's where we're at.
Great, thank you. Jamie, is there an open space?
No update on that.
Okay.
Except fill out the survey. We're going to have, we are going to have some more information going out about this survey to get a kind of another wave going.
Okay.
But no update other than that.
Okay. Subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee?
He left.
Oh, sorry. He had to go to seal.
That's right.
Sorry, for budget.
The Special Education Parent Advisory Group is meeting across the hall, so he ducked out. It's like a ninja. He just kind of.
Should we come back to that?
No, no, I think, because that was something we, the first topic on here was something that we originally discussed. I don't know, and I know both you went back and came up with some numbers to bring it before the committee, so I'll let you kind of take it away.
So mainly, a lot of the discussion in the last finance Subcommittee revolved around a school choice and Metco recommendation for the 2021 school year. And so the finance committee had encouraged us to think about a sort of a high, medium, and low recommendation in terms of the number of slots that we would open up. And what we've presented to you tonight via the memo is a sort of the mid-level recommendation. And to summarize it, and then we can kind of dive into the details if necessary, this recommendation would have the district accept in additional 10 school choice students and an additional two Metco students for the 2021 school year. I'll start with Metco. We have two students who will be graduating in June who are in the Metco program. And so this recommendation would maintain our overall current Metco enrollment at 32 students. So two graduating students would be replaced by two kindergarten students. And we could place those two kindergarten students at a school to be determined. We would place them in a, at a school where there was sufficient room at the kindergarten level. We think that at least two of our schools, there would be, there'll be sufficient room based on the budget that you had voted. And then school choice, this recommendation would, as I said, would have us accept 10 additional school choice students. And for some background, we provided you some of the historical school choice enrollment data in the memo. And you'll see that our choice enrollment has declined in recent years. And so to kind of get us back to where we've sort of been on average in the last 10 years, this would have us take 10 choice students. And we think that there is, we're very confident that there would be sufficient capacity to accept five choice students at grade nine and five students at grade three. Now, the grade three recommendation, it is made with the understanding, recognition that the committee's already voted, based on resident enrollment, has already voted to add a section at third grade. And so we think that knowing that that is inevitable based on resident enrollment, we're very confident that there would be room to take an additional five choice students at third grade. And we could assign those students to schools or a school depending on overall cohort size and class size. The other recommendation, then, the other part of it then, would have us accept five choice students at grade nine. Part of the rationale there is that we are graduating a fairly large senior class from the high school. You'll recall from our budget discussions, I can get you the exact number, but.
258.
258.
258, so we have 258 who'll be graduating in June. Thank you. And when only 228 currently in grade eight will roll into grade nine. So this would, this would offset some of the enrollment decline that we have seen, that we will see at the high school next year. So that's a recommendation. I'd say to you that it's not unusual for this to be discussed over the course of a couple of meetings. If you need additional information, if you would like us to come back with some different scenarios, we certainly can do that. So if you, if the committee had some sense that they wanted to see what a higher number would look like or a lower number would look like, we could do that. So definitely open to your thoughts and discussions, but know that if you're not ready to move on it tonight, we certainly can bring it back to the next meeting. There are parents that are anxious to know what we'll be doing. Diane gets regular, daily emails and phone calls, but I think obviously we have to do what's in our, in our best interest. We have time. I think we only have to notify the state by, I think it's June. June 1st, so. So we've got, we've got some time to decide, get it advertised, and select randomly the choice students that we would accept. So.
Thank you. Our biggest question, I think during the finance sub was whether or not our grades, we would have no impact on staffing levels. So showing that three and nine, it wouldn't have an implication, I think is, that's what I was most interested in finding out.
We're confident that this, yeah, this would have no, that's really maybe the most important point, right? That this would have zero staffing implications.
And can you, just because not everybody was in the finance sub, but 2004 to 2007, can you just kind of, we were obviously filled in on that meeting. Can you just fill everybody in on as a district?
Yeah, you'll note.
What we were doing there.
Yeah, you'll note that in the sort of early, the, James said, 2004 up 2007, we had school choice enrollments of between 103, 128 students. So that was a time when we were accepting far greater numbers of choice students. At that time, they were, as I recall, as I understand, they were only accepted at the ninth grade. And so it was something that the high school was able to absorb. I think that that, the decision was made, you know, 2007, 2008, to sort of start to scale back on that, probably because the choice enrollment relative to resident enrollment, that it was starting to maybe get to a ratio that was less comfortable. But obviously I can't speak for the administration or the committees that made those decisions at that time. But, you know, at that time, you were looking at, you know, the percentage of enrollment that was from school choice was 3.6, 3.7, 3.8. You know, right now, we're down to a, just 1.3% of our enrollees are choice students. This would bring us, this recommendation, if it were accepted, it would get us up to a total of 43 choice students, which again, it seems to me to be more in line with where we've been the last 10 years. And, you know, certainly can't ignore the fact that it is a, it is a revenue source for us, so.
Kevin?
Kate, Marty, can you just remind us, Metco, school choice, what that means?
Yeah, so Metco has existed for decades as a racial balance program. So it's designed to, as a mechanism to encourage students of color to attend schools that are largely white. And so Long Meadow has participated in the Metco program for decades.
As long as I've been here, yeah.
And, and then.
Longer.
Students have been great. They've been successful. We have, we enjoy the Metco grant that comes from the state. We have a Metco coordinator that works with Sue to support and serve the, you know, the diverse needs of those students. Choice is different. Choice is, and Metco is only open to students from Springfield. Students of color from Springfield.
Right.
Choice, on the other hand, is open to all sending communities. So we could have students from, you know, any community around. And we also send a small number, there are a very small number of students who choice out at Long Meadow. Sometimes we're seeing increasingly students attend some Commonwealth virtual schools that are out there. So that's kind of a new development for us. But largely, our choice students come from Springfield, but it's not unusual to get them from Ludlaw, East Long Meadow, Wilbraham, Agalum, all of them. And it, there's no, with the choice program, there's no expectation that it be used to serve as a mechanism to achieve more racial balance. It is, it's a, it's a blind application process. It's, students are chosen by lottery. We typically get far more applicants than there are choice slots.
We dropped, Armin, again.
Oh, we did, yeah.
Call him back.
Sure. Now you could give him this number to do it. You there?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Anything you need, rehashed, restated?
No, no, I was, again, listening on Long Meadow TV, thank you.
Okay, sure. So, anything else?
Well, that's good. If you don't mind, just a couple others. So if I look at the table correctly, the school choice, like, we don't have any school choice kids in grade two. That's going to become grade three, so we're going to essentially fill in a grade that has no school choice kids with five school choice kids. Am I reading the table correctly?
Correct. Yes.
All right, so.
So that was part of the rationale as well, is that it was a grade level where there was no choice students.
Okay. And I guess the one thing that I'm curious about in terms of the timing of our decision, in the event that we don't get the budget that we want, I guess I'm curious about the committee's thoughts of, does it make sense to pass something based on a budget that hasn't yet passed? Right? Because you just said, like, we have asked for funding for a third grade teacher so we could have the capacity to have the choice kids come in and it won't be an issue. But if our budget doesn't pass, then it could be an issue. And so I guess I'm curious, the timing of taking a vote on this before we know what our budget is.
Yeah. That's a, that's a great question. So the, you really won't know with 100% certainty until town meeting, which is in May. And so that would probably be too late for us to put the applications out and advertise it and do the lottery. I think we can have where we are right now, based on conversations that we've had with the town and knowing that the town manager has submitted a budget that reflects the school department request. I think we're in good shape and, you know, we can reasonably anticipate that the budget that you put together will be supported. But you make a great point, and I would say that I've seen situations where committees will take an initial vote and then come back and make a secondary vote if anything changes. So you could, you could vote it tonight. You could wait on it a little bit. You probably could wait until, Diane would like to do it sooner than later, but you could wait until April even, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I know people are anxious to make decisions, so like if they don't get in, they need to apply. And they are thinking of, if I don't get in there, I want to go to private schools. That's the only issue for somebody interested. So anybody who's looking to come to Long Meadow, if they don't get in on the lottery, they will put applications into private schools, a lot of them will. And that their deadlines are sooner rather than later. So then you get people, you won't get those people applying. They're going to make their decision and then they won't, we'll lose them.
Hey, can I add something?
Of course.
So, you know, the only thing I would caution is that I, when I was, my first time around the committee was at the tail end of that 2007 curve. And the, that 2004 to 2007 was specifically to fit a budget issue around, A, a failed override and then B, just tough times. And I know that the financial picture isn't exactly rosy right now, but I do think that the strategy from 2004 to 2007 was not in the best interest of Long Meadow Public Schools. And I would caution that we would use school choice as a budget filler as opposed to a program to be designed effectively to, you know, get kids into the system to share ideals or whatever else, you know, educational goals we can have as a community. But to fill a budget, I'd be adamantly against that. So I don't see a reason to delay the vote, but that's my opinion.
Thank you. Suzie?
Marty, you mentioned that, you know, our Metco students have been very successful. So I'm wondering why we, why we're keeping that number so low in the, in entering the kindergarten. I know that, you know, I've talked to families throughout the community who are really impressed with the, with the Metco students who come here and love the, you know, really the, the opportunity to build friendships, you know, kids in town build friendships with. So I'm just, I'm just wondering if we've ever thought of, and I don't know if the finance committee talked about this, but from a programmatic perspective, you know, to echo Chairman Ray's points, you know, is there, is there a way to, you know, maybe start to increase those numbers? And broaden even more the diversity?
But I would definitely invite Sue's ideas, and I wish Tom were here. I think it's, partly it's sort of balancing the programmatic value with some of the practical issues. So one of them is that with school choice, we're not responsible for transportation. With Metco, we're responsible for transportation, so we, you know.
So there's a budget impact?
Yeah, we want to be careful about getting to that tipping point where we have to, let's say, add a bus, you know, because then, you know, that takes away from the resources that you have to serve the kids who you're trying to serve, so. So I think that's part of it. I don't know if there's any other thoughts on that.
The majority, it's a fixed amount per student, so we don't get any, anything back for students who require additional assistance like we do with choice. There is a competitive grant this year that we could apply for to get some funds back for some of our students that require special education services, but we haven't heard back yet and it's not guaranteed. It's a competitive grant. So there's a kind of a fixed budget amount that we need to kind of abide by to make sure that we can. And so we put another bus on that. That's definitely the tipping point for that. But we've taken more than two.
How many buses do we have?
We have two.
Two.
Yeah.
So like a K to five, K to five and six, six through 12?
We have a middle kindergarten and a high school.
Okay.
Yep.
And it might not even be a situation where you're really, like, it's because you're filling a bus. It might be because you've added from the sort of geographic areas that you have to.
Yes.
Pick kids up from in Springfield. So you might be.
Can I add something here?
Yeah.
So, I mean, for me, for Metco, you know, like, I think it's a great program. I think you brought up some of the issues we have around, you know, flossing and tipping the scales towards having to add another bus without the reimbursement on that. The second thing is the reimbursement, which the state does not reimburse Metco at the same rate as school choice. So it's about $22,000 less than, than the school choice. And I have fought forever with legislators as I meet them just to say, I don't know why you do that. Like, it should be the same exact, same exact fee. The other thing I think is we set up our children within that program for success through the use of the Metco coordinator. And I would hesitate to overload her with too many students so that she can give them all the personal attention and, and time that they need to be successful in Long Meadow Public Schools.
Thank you. I just had a question about the kindergarten enrollment for next year, where that, where that stood kind of at this point.
So Diane is the one that takes in the registrations and, so I know, feels like we have capacity at Blueberry and Wolf Swamp. Center is, is.
Is getting closer to, for the number of teachers, we're getting close to the top at center. Blueberry and Wolf Swamp, we're doing quite well. We have lots of run.
Yeah. Not to put you on the spot, you don't, you don't recall where we are with K enrollment, do you, overall?
153 is our number right now that is on our list. And it's broken out almost, I don't have the exact numbers. It's about 60 for center, 42, I think, for Wolf Swamp, and 40.
So, that 150 compares to the 180 students that are currently in kindergarten. So, obviously, we can anticipate that that 150 will go up. I guess it's always.
It's gone up a lot since we first started. In January, we had 96 kids on our list. So, now we're up to 153. I imagine it will go up a little bit more.
How many people have we not heard from yet, like, for certain?
How many have not registered?
Yeah.
Probably about half. But we, I have, our secretaries right now are sending out their feelers. They're contacting parents again, saying, hey, we haven't heard from you. It's okay to register even if you don't have your medical form yet. I want that out there for the public to know. I understand kids don't get their checkups until their birth dates. And if you've got a May birthday, don't hang on to your registration packet, waiting for that. Just bring it in and we'll get the health form later.
Okay. I'm just wondering, if we have 180 kindergartners this year and 153 right now, and there could be a couple more, why we, why we might not add a couple of school choice students to kindergarten next year, perhaps? Just a thought. If we're retaining the same amount of teachers, why not?
Yeah, we'll be down, right now, with the budget, where we have, currently, we have seven, 10 sections at kindergarten. Next year, we're scheduled for nine, three at each elementary school. So, I think there may be capacity at Blueberry and Wolf Swamp to add K choice students.
Right. So, if there's three at each and we're at 44 and 42, I'm just thinking, I don't know what you guys think about it.
Do you have staff, staff students on that list that you're looking at?
Uh, that's right.
I think we have some staff kindergartners coming in.
That's included in that 153.
Just making sure. Yeah, thanks. We had quite a few come in today. I don't know if you got them all, but.
Yeah, I heard 10.
Oh, 10 registered.
10 families registered today. So, that's, that's awesome.
10 K families?
Yes. Yeah, today was a good day.
K is always a little murkier, right? I mean, it's always a little bit more of a guessing game. It could be one of those things, we could conceivably come back to that in late April, you know?
We've done that before.
Yeah. And come back to it and say, all right, it looks like, you know, we're starting to get a better handle on whether enrollment looks like a K. And so, we're very confident that we can add X number of choice slots at K.
Sounds like a good idea.
You know, you can kind of keep that in your back pocket if you wanted.
And when we offer somebody admission as a school choice student, are we committing to them for the entire length of time they want to stay in the district?
Yes.
So, I think you guys put a lot of time and effort into this. So, just, just to reiterate what you said, you know, we focused on grade nine because we have attrition. We have more students going out than coming in. In grade three, we're having extra staffing. So, these are kind of ones that you look at that are good ones to focus on. The others get a little bit murky because we did talk a lot about that, where you have a lot of ebb and flow and you obviously have a lot of comments via correspondence or whatever with regards to class size. But I think you guys did a great job, focused on two grades where, you know, are, really make a lot of sense. And if we need to add in the future, you know, so be it. But I, I think this makes sense. You have your point.
So many factors that go into this. And even sometimes you look at the, not just the individual class size at individual schools, but the overall cohort size. And now, that was something that Jamie brought up at Finance Sub, is that, you know, like, at first grade right now, we have 209 students. So, even though there might be room there, it might not be a good idea to introduce students with that cohort, because when that cohort gets to middle school, it might be, become tougher to schedule them. So, you really try to look not just at the coming school year, but you're trying to look several years out, so.
I think I definitely would want to revisit the kindergarten, because it seems like we would have, right now, 27 less kindergartners than we currently have this year. So, I'd like to leave that door open, if people are open to that. Because I think school choice is a great program, as is Metco. So, just what I was thinking. Does Metco need to know earlier than school choice?
Metco's rolling, so we can take them right through the end of the school year.
Okay.
Yeah.
But school choice is now?
School choice is June 1st. I believe.
We have to, yeah, we have to tell the state what we're doing by June 1st.
I have a question about basing the procedure on this. So, if we were to do the motion on Metco with two seats, and at the end of April, we got more information that made it look like kindergarten was going to be down, can we do a new motion to add three?
Yes.
So, at least the idea is out there that there are seats, so Springfield can move forward, knowing that we will have at least some, and then collect their applicants. And then if we increase it, then we're just going to get three more?
Yeah.
Or whatever the number may be.
We've done that in the past.
That makes sense.
Right. And we can just do the same with Choice?
Same. You can do, apply the same thinking with Choice.
Okay. Super.
So, this doesn't work, does it? To just be.
Right. Sorry, I just use Metco as an example, or Choice, whichever.
Okay. Well, that's good to know, for sure.
Do we, do we have to then, to Ryan's point, do we have to then amend this motion to say?
No, later we will just do, later we will just do a new one.
No, you just do another one. Yeah.
Thank you.
There is a motion.
I move that the school committee approve opening seats for school choice students in the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year in the following grades and number of seats per grade. Grade three, five seats. Grade nine, five seats.
Is there a second?
I mean.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote for this. Jamie?
Hi.
Gianna?
Hi.
Armin?
Aye.
Aye. Ryan?
Yes.
Suzy?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. There's also a motion for Metco students?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Sub Committee that the school committee accept students in the Metco program for the 2020, 2021 school year in the following grade level and number of seats. Grade kindergarten, number of seats, two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And this also requires a roll call vote. Jamie?
Aye.
Gianna?
Aye.
Armin?
Aye.
Yes. Ryan?
Yes.
Suzy?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. There's also a motion for Metco students?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Sub Committee that the school committee accept students in the Metco program for the 2020, 2021 school year in the following grade level and number of seats. Grade kindergarten, number of seats, two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And this also requires a roll call vote. Jamie?
Aye.
Gianna?
Aye.
Armin?
Aye.
Yes. Ryan?
Yes.
Suzy?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. The Policy Sub Committee was going to meet prior to this meeting, but Dr. O'Shea was called to the meeting with Chief Dearborn, so we actually weren't able to meet. So, we'll reschedule that for some time, hopefully in the near future. Curriculum Sub has not met, and Eval Sub has not met either. So, we'll move on to ongoing business, which are overnight field trip requests.
So, this was, again, I think this was a little more in the gray zone about a week ago. I think it's become more clear that you have a recommendation for two overnight field trip requests for Long Meadow High School. This is for trips that received preliminary approval last year, one to France, the other two, Italy and Greece. And it is our recommendation to you that these not be approved, given the recommendations and guidelines that we've heard from CDC, MassDPH, and other organizations. So, I think there's a, there is an amended motion that Mr. Gantis had placed at your seats. Do you want discussion or do you want the motion?
Do you want to do the motion and the discussion?
I'm asking the chair.
Yes, we'll do the motion first. Thank you.
I move that the school committee not approve the overnight field trip request for students from LHS to travel to Paris and Normandy, France, April 15th to 24th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Kevin?
I guess I was just curious. I know that it was in our packet. There were a lot of pages and a lot of words about, like, the legal thing. I know the parents, the parents I know who have kids going on these field trips, they just are curious, like, are they getting any money back, what the deal is? And again, I know this might, this is a fluid situation, so we might not know, but reading those contracts, it did not look encouraging.
I would say, I don't have reason for optimism right now. I don't have reason to be pessimistic either. So, we have sent all the contracts, the trip insurance agreements, to Attorney Jenny Tate, and we've asked her to look at those. She's still reviewing those. And Mr. Dunkley, Mr. Landers have been in regular touch with World Strides, the organization, to try to advocate for our families as best they possibly can. I'm not sure yet if the Italy, if we'll have more recourse with the Italy trip than we would with the France trip, given the conditions in Italy. The other thing that I have seen that was intriguing and interesting that I saw just today was that it appears there's some motion and activity on these questions at the state level. Because what we're experiencing here, districts across the state are experiencing, so it could be that the State Superintendent's Association will jump into this with whatever influence they have. And then I've even heard that it could be that the Attorney General's Office could be jumping into this as well. So, we will continue to advocate for our families and do our best to, you know, best case scenario, to get a full refund. The travel organization has talked about vouchers for travel, which I understand might be transferable, because there wouldn't be a lot of use to a student who's a current senior. So, it's still, still in flux, but we hope that there could be some recourse. I mean, this is disappointing, obviously. The families have put up a lot of money, kids were super excited, a lot of planning by our administrators and by teachers. These are rich, rich experiences for kids, and it's really disappointing, but it's happening everywhere.
Any other discussion or questions?
I have a question. What's the, if we don't know if they can get money back, what is the benefit or the requirement for us doing this tonight? Since this has been such a fluid thing, the ebb and flow of this virus, why do we have to cancel it tonight?
Is your, your question, I think, I might know why you're asking. In other words, if the committee takes no action, right, might we be in a better position?
We knew more now than we did eight hours ago. So, I'm guessing two weeks from now, we're going to know something different. So, I'm just curious.
Deal.
Italy looks like a mess.
Yeah.
Clearly.
The reason it came here tonight.
It can change in three weeks.
Is that the committee is responsible for giving final approval on field trips at least 30 days prior to departure. So, we'd be inside that 30 days at your next meeting. Procedurally, there might be some ways around that. I mean, the bottom line is, in the, in the case of the Italy trip, the travel organization has said that they're not traveling to Italy. They have said that they will offer an alternative trip. Not sure what that would be. And then, in the case of France, they have said, as recently as today, that they see no problem with traveling to France. So, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I have a great answer to your question, Ryan, but.
In the contracts, there's like different timeframes, like 75 days, 30 days. So, I mean, when I was reading that, I was thinking, we're this many days out from the trip. So, I mean, if we were trying to get as much money back as possible, we'd have to, you know, let them know sooner versus later.
And it's, I mean, ultimately, the contract, I suppose, is between the families and the, and the travel organization, right? But if, if the committee takes action perhaps sooner rather than later, it might be, you know, I guess I honestly, it's, as Kevin suggested, given all the contracts and the language, it's, it's not abundantly clear. I think your policy would require that you take action tonight, frankly.
Armin, do you have anything to add on that?
No, I think I would echo Marty's, as I mentioned, our policy in regards to the field trips and I think the public safety, health, risk, you know, the safety is, you know, handed out to our, our children. So, I, I don't hear enough of those.
Okay. Thank you.
I also think too, even though France, right now, again, to your point, eight hours, two weeks can make a difference, we don't know what can happen at the time that these kids are about to go. So, they, they decide to go, and, you know, I think that's the, that's like, those are all the wild cards in all of this, is what will happen next, which you will drop.
If the, I suppose, if the, if things suddenly change for the better.
Right.
We could come back to you and hustle a vote together with, you know, with some policy exception, but none of us really foresee that. I think it's probably best to bring some clarity to families. I think they, it's, they understand that this will be the position of the district.
And if that trip goes to France and things worsen while they're there.
Right.
All those kids, administrators, teachers are all going to be on self-quarantine for two weeks.
At least self-quarantine.
Yeah. Maybe they won't get back in the country.
Maybe they won't get back in the country. That's, yeah.
I have a daughter in Paris as we speak, by the way.
And with just yesterday, that France banned gatherings and more than other people. So, I think, you know, the loo's already closed, you know, most of the sites, we probably have more than that many.
Right. Any other questions or discussion? So, I'll call for a vote. Jamie?
Aye.
Gianna?
Aye.
Armin?
Aye.
Brown one, yes. Ryan?
No.
Suzy?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Thank you. There is another motion there?
Move that the school committee not approve the overnight field trip request for students from Long Meadow High School to travel to Italy and Greece, April 16th to 24th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, also, the people said that they won't even go there, so it seems like that's a done deal as well. Okay, a call for a vote. Jamie?
Aye.
Gianna?
Aye.
Armin?
Aye.
Brown one, yes. Ryan?
Yes.
Suzy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll certainly keep the committee posted on any success that we have in lobbying for the interests of the families and the kids.
It does seem that with all these schools on the list that you gave us, and all the superintendents getting together, and, like you said, maybe even contacting people at the state level, hopefully, something can be done for, for some refunds. That would be very helpful. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and one more thing that I've forgotten, is, you know, the vote's done, but women pay their vote. Greece has suspended all transportation from Italy to Greece. And that trip that the kids are going on with in the past, they take a high-speed ferry from Italy to Greece.
All right. Great point. Thank you.
So, I want to credit Tom for, and Diane for managing the details of the statements of interest and updating them and reflecting some new conditions, but largely, it was a matter of, you know, adding years to the age of certain systems. There were a few developments at Glenbrook that are reflected in the new SOI. And I don't know how much committee wants to get into the reasons for the SOI. I think that we've had that discussion in a few different ways and times and places, but certainly, we can, we can get into the, the reasons that we need to address the facilities, and then I have some information I can project very easily on a potential timeline, if that's of interest to the committee as well. So, we can, we can kind of respond to however you want to go with this. If you feel like you need some sort of background information, we can do that. If you want to see the timeline, we can do that, or if you want to ask questions and then move to a vote, we can do that.
Does anyone have any preference? Armin?
I'm pretty familiar with the...
No questions there.
Okay. So, does anyone feel like we need to start all over from the beginning and review everything, or is everyone is familiar with it already? Okay, did you want to just go over the timeline?
Yeah, I mean, for what it's worth, I think one of the, one of the things that I think is of interest to community members that I talk to and town officials is the potential timeline. I think there's, seems to be some general consensus that we have two buildings that need, whose needs have to be addressed. And so, we're projecting here what the potential timeline would look like based on a submission to the Mass School Building Authority this spring on our two middle schools. You'll see that it's a long and protracted process, and, you know, there really, the obligation to the town in terms of borrowing wouldn't fall until that last phase, that this design, construction, and opening phase. So, we're a ways off in terms of seeing potential tax impact, and I know that, that's something that we've talked to the town treasurer about, and just to understand what, how this might fit into the debt load that the town manages. So, obviously, we want to be respectful of the fiscal position of the town, but I'd also say that to do nothing is not an option. And so, I think the responsible thing to do right now is to submit statements of interest to the Mass School Building Authority. Were this, if this, if there were a successful vote tonight, we would bring it to the select board at their next meeting on March 16th. It requires their approval as well, so that the two boards have to approve it together. So, that's the timeline, and, you know, happy to answer any, and any other questions you might have, but again, there are, the statements of interest have been modified and updated. Thank you, Tom, thank you, Diane, but largely, we're making the same case, you know, that we have two aging middle schools that haven't experienced major renovation since they opened 50 or 60 years ago.
Have a question.
So, having two statements of interest, one for each school, that wouldn't stop us from then planning a single middle school for the town? It would replace the two?
It would not. And the only thing I would say the committee should be aware of is that we have to identify one school as the sort of the priority application. Glenbrook has been identified as the priority application. I think what, what separates the Glenbrook SOI from Williams is sort of the safety concerns and the ADA issues. Both have systemic issues that are comparable, but Glenbrook in those two areas seems to be more of a priority. It certainly would not stop us from having that conversation. In fact, we're, we're explicit in the SOIs that we would want to use this process as a way to explore the feasibility of a, a single middle school. But again, that, that has to make educational sense, it's got to make, you know, sense from an architectural engineering perspective, it's got to make sense, obviously, from a fiscal perspective, so, you know, I think it would be premature to say that we should or shouldn't pursue a single facility, but we should certainly use this process to explore that, and that's, that's one of the values of working with the MSBA, is that you get a full-blown feasibility study at that third stage up there.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I just think it's important to notice the, the timeline is pretty significant, and this process of submitting the SOI, which we've done several times before, is the first step, and, you know, the, the committee is also aware of the tax ceiling and things like that, but as Dr. O'Shea said, we can't do nothing at the schools, so submitting the SOI seems like a logical step for us, and we'll see what the MSBA says after that. There's a motion.
So, this might be the, this might be the hardest part.
Yeah, it's very specific and dictated by MSBA, so, okay. Oh, I'll go. Thank you, Suzie. So, resolved, having convened in an open meeting on March 10th, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of the town of Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form no later than April 8th, 2020, for the Williams Middle School located at 410 Williams Street, Long Meadow, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school's facility. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we'll take a roll call. Any discussion? Roll call, Jamie?
Aye.
Gianna?
Aye.
Armin?
Aye.
Bronwyn, yes. Ryan?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
Thank you. There is another-
I'll read it.
-motion. Thank you, Ryan.
Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on March, it says 16th. We're going to change that to 10th.
Yes, 10th, sorry.
March 10th, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the select-
No school funding.
-school committee of the town of Long Meadow.
A little information?
Yes.
Is that the motion for the select board to vote on as opposed to ours?
No, this one's about Glenbrook.
It's the same, only I forgot to change the date and the body.
Select board, okay, just-
It's the exact same.
Thank you, Diane.
Ruined my flow. Should I start over?
I think you should start over.
Okay.
You didn't look my point of information right?
I don't even know where you're talking from. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on March 10th, 2020, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the select, uh, school committee of the town of Long Meadow, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated no later than April 8th, 2020, for the Glenbrook Middle School located at 110 Cambridge Circle, Long Meadow, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement or renovation of a building which is structurally unsound or otherwise in a condition seriously jeopardizing the health and safety of schoolchildren where no alternative exists. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy and conserva-, energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Jamie?
Yes.
Gianna?
Aye.
Bronwyn, yes. Ryan? Oh, Armin? Sorry.
Aye.
Bronwyn, yes. Ryan?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the Student Opportunities Act Plan, Ms. Bertrand and Dr. O'Shea will provide the committee with a summary of the plan.
So, required by the new Student Opportunity Act is a, is a three-year student opportunity plan, and this is to reflect the revenue that was, the additional revenue that was generated out of the Student Opportunity Act. You'll remember that we are projected to receive only an additional $82,000 in Chapter 78, so it's, it's a small amount of money, and to the state's credit, they allowed us to develop small plans. Districts have received far more, Chapter 78, the incrementally were required to develop more ambitious plans. But, they wanted to, the state wanted to see that any additional Chapter 70 funds were allocated in targeted ways to address underperformance of student, high-needs students in the high-needs category. So, thank you, Sue, for putting this together, and it was a, in some respects, a challenging bureaucratic exercise, but it also, the plan reflects some of the very purposeful allocations that we made for the FY '21 budget. So, the plan is there. Sue, maybe some additional explanation and-
Sure, we get to do, like Marty said, the short form, because we got less than 1.5 million. I would have been happy to do the long form, and they gave us 1.6 million, but they didn't. So, we really needed to keep our plan to a small number of evidence-based activities, and they stressed the word "short" many, many times, and succinct, and the state gave us sample focus areas, 17 focus areas, and then also aligned the Student Opportunity Act categories to those areas. So, we needed to take a look at those areas and build our plan upon those, and really, with a lot of things these days, it's really a gap-closing measure for underperforming students. So, we looked at our data, and we know that our students with disabilities and our students who are, you can have link disadvantage, perform below the aggregate group, so those are our two target groups, and you can see some of the, we're doing much more than this, just targeted a few of the, the things that we're doing. We're moving to a full-day pre-K for one of our classes next year. We're going to bring some, a more targeted literacy program into preschool that should help going up, and some other things here. So, just so you can pick it up, and I want, under the program categories, we initially had the nurse of the high school in there, and we actually removed that out of the plan. So, C, where it says SOA program categories, we're going to cross C off, and we just forgot to remove that. Sorry.
If you have any questions?
Interesting, I, I'll, I'll share some frustration with the requirements of the Student Opportunity Act, that we really don't know for sure how much Chapter 78 we're going to receive, and we only today received the actual template, the final template that the state wants us to use for this plan, so this, the, the, the law was only passed in, I think it was January, right? And so, you know, we, we only learned of the requirements a short time after that, and, and the guidance hasn't been super clear from the state, but we hope that it reflects some of the targeted decisions that we made with the FY '21 budget. You know, to be honest with you, some of this is, is occurring after the fact. We've already shaped and voted a budget for the next school year. The plan is coming after it, because we didn't have the guidance from the state on it until after your public budget hearing, so...
Just a point of information, Mr. Ray exited at 7:48, so...
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
I have a question, Sue. So, I'm just confused with the, with the metrics we're using and the strategies we're putting in place, because you're, you're focused on early literacy and pre-K-
Yeah.
But your metrics are fourth and fifth grade ELA.
Yeah, so they want us to use DESI metrics when at all possible, and so the plan is rolling over several years, so the expectation is that by the time students hit third grade, who have been in this full day K and have this program, we'll have an, we'll, we'll watch that and see where, where they land. They'll set our targets, DESI will. So, we agreed to use MCAS, they'll set the targets for it. In-house, though, we'll be looking at our AMES web screening, our VAST assessment systems and things like that, so we'll look in-house more deeply then.
And they don't require that, that information?
No.
That in-house, like, translation of this is what we have, that, that just seems strange.
They give you the, they give you the evidence, they give you the metrics, and then they give you the evidence-based strategies that you can use for the plan.
Yeah. It's just, I mean, I would think you'd want a yearly understanding of progress versus, like, let's wait five years. I don't even, I don't know what we got today, but I don't even, yeah, I'm not even sure when we need to report next on it, so I think they want to be able to kind of gather the data themselves, and so if we use their metrics, they're getting data every year. They're not getting data on the pre-K kids, though, but some of the other things that we have in place.
It doesn't, I guess it doesn't, it wouldn't in any way preclude us from using the data that Sue mentioned and that you're interested in. I think we would still be-
Right.
Frankly, that data would be far more important to us than the data that we've listed on the Student Opportunity Act plan here.
Right, yes, right, yeah.
There is a, there is a bit of a disconnect.
Yes.
Yeah.
They might come back and say, why don't you put some of your own-
Add some metrics.
Possibility, but that would, that would certainly make sense, yeah. That was my biggest question.
We do have a motion?
I have another question.
Oh.
Oh, so it's Kevin, he's handling first.
Kevin.
How much money are we getting?
This plan reflects, well, overall, we receive 5.0, the town of Long Meadow receives 5.4 million dollars or so in Chapter 78. Is that close?
It's the exact numbers you want, but it's ballpark.
Tom likes exact numbers. This plan only needs to reflect any increase we received over FY '20, so this is a, it reflects an increase of $82,000 over FY '20.
Right, but those numbers don't add up to $82,000.
Scratch out the nurse and do it.
Thank you.
Even if you scratch out the nurse, they don't add up to $82,000. They add up to 100 and something. Scratch out the nurse, they add up to 60 something.
It's okay, they don't need to have exact numbers, you don't have to get it to the exact, they want to know what we're doing in the district to do the gap-closing measures and all those things, yeah.
All right, that's kind of my mission a bit.
They threw it together pretty quickly, maybe they'll refine it as they go along, but, I don't know.
It's fine, it just seems odd.
Partly because that $82,000 increase over last year, that's not even locked in yet.
Sixteen.
That's only, that's only based on the governor's budget.
Right, so they don't even know exactly.
We won't know exactly what we're receiving over FY '20 until-
Maybe June, depends.
It's safe to say we've had larger increases prior to the Student Opportunity Act, Chapter 78.
Ryan, did you have something as well?
I was going to ask about advantaged math recovery. Who's that for?
Um, we are, we have a concerted effort to get K-1, 2, and some 3 and special teachers trained, so we started some training last year in our math specialists, and we are continuing on that road, so wherever we can find funding and slots, we're sending people to it. But I think the next time I report to you, I'm going to bring some data on the teachers that are using that with students, it's pretty incredible.
Is it online, or is it an online program?
No, no. It's a face-to-face kind of small group, or even one-to-one targeted instruction, but kids are making amazing progress.
Thank you.
All right, Gianna?
Sue, under the evidence-based program identified by DESI that targeted student supports, is that, is the, you know, I know the increased personnel for the preschool, but I, the support holistic student needs, is that also referring to the nurse?
To the nurse, right, sorry. Take that out of there. I think after we thought about the nurse more, we decided that she really was going to have time to attend to students' physical needs, and that was probably going to be about it, basically. Take that out of there. I think after we thought about the nurse more, we decided that she really was going to have time to attend to students' physical needs, and that was probably going to be about it, basically. Just in a bad thing.
Yes.
Any other questions? There's a motion.
A move on the recommendation of the superintendent. The school committee approved the Student Opportunities Act Plan as presented and dated March 10th, 2020.
As revised.
As revised.
Sorry.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion?
He's gone, so I don't think you have to do roll call anymore.
All in favor? Great. Thank you. There is a motion for adjournment. There's no executive session.
A move that the school committee adjourned in the March 10th, 2020 school committee meeting.
Second? Second. They need to adjourn.
Well, he didn't vote yet.
Oh, sorry. All in favor? Adjourned.
I have to adjourn.